Is six oh five P M. And I am calling this meeting to order of the Ocean Beach Planning Board Project Review Committee. It is February sixteenth. And it is six oh five P M. And hopefully you guys can see the agenda here on your screen. We'll start off, all the committee members, please introduce yourselves. My name is Kevin Hastings. I'm the vice chair of the planning board and I chair this committee.
I'm Chris Chalupski, Vice Chair of this subcommittee and I'm the planning board District Three.
And I know Tom is in the room here.
Tom Veronski. Member of the committee and representing District Six.
And I'm going to take a quick peek and I don't see a waiting room on here Tracy on my end. So with that said, we do have a quorum. I'm going to open up the agenda on my end. Let me read through some of the sort of the administrative stuff. I do not have minutes from the previous meeting for review. So we're going to skip that one. And the next item will be to approve the agenda. Which I'm going to pull back up in a second here. Makes it all difficult to do that. Can you guys see that on your screen here?
Yes.
So as I, as I mentioned, just forty six oh five tonight. Does anyone have a motion on the agenda?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that. Does anyone oppose that? Hearing none. That's three zero zero to approve the agenda. Next item on our agenda, non-agenda public comment. We usually don't have this at committee meetings, but if anyone wishes to make non-agenda comments, that is anything within the purview of the board that is not specifically on the agenda tonight. You can do that now and committee members, anyone can do that. Hearing none. We're going to move on to action item number one. This is four six zero five Santa Cruz Avenue. This is a process three permit. Because I believe it involves a subdivision of a lot into two parcels. It has an existing dwelling unit at the front of the lot that is to remain. And this is a proposal to split the lot and construct a new dwelling unit at the rear of the lot. This is in the R M one one zone east of Sunset Cliffs Boulevard. And I'm going to stop my screen share here. And the applicant should have the ability to share their own. And you can kind of go in whichever order you want. Anything that you don't drag up, we may ask about anyways. But feel free to start us off. And we're going to follow. If there's any, you know, real quick clarification questions, that's fine to ask during the presentation, but I'd ask the committee members and anyone else to withhold their commentary until after the presentation is done. Fire away.
The, I can't tell what you're seeing. If you're seeing what I'm sharing, which is the first sheet of the tentative map?
Yes.
Okay, so it's exactly as you say, this is a small lot subdivision, proposed small lot subdivision and a site development permit for the, and this is the property right here. There's a, a, to retain the existing, I'll go to the second sheet. This is the existing residents and this is the proposed residence back here on the alley. There, there's nothing planned for the, for the existing residents, no construction, no changes in that at all. The, there are conditions that the city have given for, for improvements, including upgraded driveway, curb and gutter on, on Santa Cruz, curb and gutter here and in a, a curb, a alley, cross gutter approach. And it is for an approximately twenty four hundred square foot new residence. See if I can show you. I'm not the architect, but maybe able to show you the some of the elevations. So we're seeing the entrance says from, from the east. And this is from the alley garage here on that, that area. Also, it'd be interesting to know that this is not a slab on grade particularly. We're trying to, to preserve, sort of preserve the, the existing earthwork here. And so this is a raised foundation for a portion of it. The garage is on a, on a slab. See. We do have landscape plans as required. So that has been addressed on these along with irrigation as well. I think that's about all I have on it.
All right. Now. Where are you at on the cycle issues?
So we've, so we've been through one review. Those have been addressed and returned to the city. I think it was two weeks ago, it went back into the city.
I did look at them. There's a lot of it's sort of a informational type of stuff, you know, forms, stormwater, it seems like a lot of that. I did not see any, you know, deal breakers or any real major issues on there, like parking or setbacks or anything of that sort.
I agree. There was nothing significant as far as we're concerned.
So can you zoom in on the, that, I think the first, one of the first sheets has the project info. It kind of shows the height and areas and that sort of thing. It's not that sheet. And you may not be totally familiar with these sheets. Now try the second sheet. There's some, there are a couple of different versions of this. Let me pull it up on my end here. Looking for the project info. It's usually the first of the architectural sheets. It looks like page three.
Okay, here, this one.
Yeah, so that project info in the middle there, can you zoom in on that? So everyone can see that. And some of us have small screens. All right, so it's thirty two hundred square feet, so it's slightly less than half of the current lot size, which is seven thousand, I believe.
Yes, approximately.
Okay, and then the F A R, I see you've got point seven five twenty four hundred square feet and you are building it out to twenty four hundred square feet. Some of that is garage. Now, could you zoom in on the site plan? Showing the back of the lot. I think that's page two.
Of the, of the architectural or the actual?
Uh, no, this, this, I guess the civil. Yeah, it's page, it's page two of that whole stuff. So there's the front sheet there, or sorry, the front property.
Yes.
And then parking two spots. That is, I guess that's allowed now in this area. And, and could you zoom in on that rear parcel? I see, I see the grade lines there. So I'm familiar with this one. It's an empty, empty lot right now. There's a kind of an awkward looking house next to it with almost no windows on that side. Is that right?
Up on the adjacent, on this property itself?
On the neighboring.
Neighbor property, yeah, that's right. I think you're right on that. Yes, up here.
Yeah, kind of a rude architectural design on
Yes.
At the end of it. So so I see the pad there, that slab on grade and then raised floor. So that's enclosed in the garage. You've got your visibility triangles there to the alley. Five foot setbacks. Could you, could you locate the zoom in on the first floor plan? So I see two bedrooms here, entry off of, I guess that's frowned right there.
Yes.
And the entry. May, maybe the, that other one had the landscape. Well, you have a separate landscaping plan.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
While we're on the floor plans, could you pull up the second floor? Hang on a second here, I'm gonna gotta email one of the other committee members here. So that large area is a living, sort of open living, open concept. Kitchen and living room. And then there's a master bedroom on the left. And you've got a large deck, it looks like, that overhangs towards the front house, right?
Correct.
Okay. And could you pull up the the landscaping drawing? So on here. The front is excluded from this. So could you clarify on here the I, I, I think the paving here is the steps going down to frowned there and then sort of a pathway to the driveways. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. And then all the rest of that's landscaped.
It is.
That tree in the corner there. Are they? Did they flag that for a visibility area?
They, they haven't, no, we didn't have a, a comment on that. This, this was prepared by the landscape architects following the, the first round of cycle issues.
They didn't bring that up as far as you know.
They didn't.
Yeah, because I, I know they are, are pretty strict about the visibility lines coming out of alleys. So you don't have, you know, conflicts with that's a funny word, conflict. So you don't get pedestrians run over by cars.
Yes.
Because they can't see them coming into the alley there. So that's, I'm not sure why they didn't flag that or, or what's going on there. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. You've got maybe some pavers on the other side there. In a landscaped area, it looks like. These, these squares are those? What are those?
These here.
There's blank squares kind of on the top and on the bottom as well. Those white squares.
These?
No, the little squares. So I can see up at the top property line.
Oh, that, let me see. Probably he's got a a legend here someplace. Looks like rock mulch is what it looks like he's got here for the symbol for that.
I'm not sure. I don't, I don't see it on there. I think it's, it's, it seems like a paver because it looks like a walkway.
Well, this, oh, these, yeah, these are papers. Yes.
Okay. All right. So basically kind of a garden type of setup, not really any usable space, just sort of a little breathing area there. All right, I, I get it. And then the, the elevations, I didn't see the heights listed on there. Do you?
See.
Oh, actually, no, this is a good one here. I didn't see this one. So this has angled building envelope on there. Which view is this? Which elevation?
This is from the north. So this is the, this would be the area, the area facing the existing home.
Gotcha. And I see you've got some overhangs there to either side. What about the other elevations? This one looks like it has the height limit drawn on there. So, okay, so that, that line at the top, that kind of curved dash line at the top, that's the thirty foot height limit for everyone's.
Yes. Yes.
And this is, kind of gets close on the slope side there. And then the rest is, is less than that. And the finishes here, is that, is that stucco?
Yes.
What about the roof?
Roof, I don't know. Let me see.
It almost looks like a metal roof.
Number one. One, yeah, metal standing scene that, well, you can read it, number one.
Interesting. That's unique out here. It's sort of an east coast kind of thing. And then you've got the, it's like a glass paneling on most of the deck there. That's number five, glass railing. Okay. I think I get it. I see a fireplace in there as well. Any questions or comments from any member of the public? Or committee members?
I have a, just one question. What is dictating the, the subdivision of the lot? Is this home going to be re-sold or, or what's the reason for that?
That I can't answer. I, I, I don't know what the answer is to that.
Well, this is Tom and I will bet what's driving it is money.
Yeah. I, we see a lot of eighty years and a lot of, you know, buildings being squeezed onto existing lots. I was just curious. Don't see a lot of these where they're pulling a lot apart and constructing a new single residence. So really kind of curious to know about that. Otherwise, I mean, I kind of scanned through the psycho comments. I didn't see anything of issue fairly quickly, but as Kevin said, I think to start, it seemed pretty mundane back and forth. Things I, you know, I always appreciate when the home is not a, a box. And so, you know, the, the roof style here, although yes, it does look to me like it's metal as well. Seems to fall within our community planning aspirations. So that's appreciated. I'm really familiar with this particular lot too. And you know, it's a, it's, it's to squeeze it back up here on the northwest or sorry, southwest corner of the lot. I mean, it, it makes sense that these are going to be tremendous from the decks. And there is that neighboring residence that is kind of already setting a precedent for a tall building squeezed right up against the alley. But I think this one could, could really have gone down a different road and, and, and not worked at all aesthetically. This, in my opinion, this home kind of bridges the gap between the smaller homes you find off of the intersection of Froud and Santa Cruz and then that big monster home, that's the neighboring property. So I think aesthetically, this is a good design. I sure would love to know more about the ultimate plans of the property. That's it for me.
This is Jackie Hellis and one of the owners and the, the people trying to do this development. And to answer your question about our future plan. We're, we're retirement age and you know, once we succeed in developing our property, a part of our plan is to go ahead and sell the front house with, with what we call it the front house and and that'll make for our return. So that's, that's our long-term.
Live in the back.
Got it. It's an upgrade for you. That, that's, that's good. Thank you. Yeah, there you go. I appreciate that answer. Thanks for joining the meeting.
Yeah. This is Kevin. Yeah, I mean, it all makes sense to me. I, I, I don't blame you. That front house. It doesn't look as old as some of the other ones, but I don't think you'll have any problem selling that thing for the, you know, probably a million bucks these days are what these are going for, even on a half lot. So the, I, as far as the community plan goes, I, I think this does abide by that well. You know, it does max out the F A R, but you know, you're not pushing the limit to the height and, and the setbacks and imposing on the neighbors like we see from some projects. I, I do appreciate the hipped roof and the low profile roof there. The, you know, it looks like a lot of stucco on the surrounds. I'm not going to call myself the architectural police. I'm not a fan of stucco, but you do have at least a lot of sort of broken up facade and, and windows and decks and things like that. So really, really mix it up. So I think this is going to go over well at the full planning board. You got anything, Tom?
Well, I think it should go to the whole planning group because it's process three. And it's clearly setting it a precedent, at least for our area. So since, since that's true, I think it should go to the whole board. But I'm, I think the project looks nice. That I don't, I don't see any real issues.
All right. Well, there you go. Yeah, the process three. I mean, in the past, a lot size this small wouldn't be allowed in this area. And I know our community plan does speak against lot splitting. But that's often because you end up with these skinny, long lots. And that's what is allowed. Even if the lot size is undersized. So that, that's why they're having to go through the small loss subdivision on this one. Which is sort of a newer thing. But it, you know, it kind of gets the same result as a two-on-one project. You know, I don't see them cramming.
That's what's said by my end is that if, because if we're going to be a two-on-one, that it wouldn't, there wouldn't be any issue at all.
Yeah, and they both have street frontage here, being on the corner there. So you know, this is already done in a lot of those corner lots. So so, yeah, I got no issues with it. The landscaping looks, looks well thought out as well. I know there was quite a few comments on that from the city. So the, the next full board meeting is in two weeks. Or is it in two weeks? It's, it's the first Wednesday of each month. And so I, I I think this would be ready for that. I don't see any significant items from the city that would change that. When did you last resubmit to the city?
I think it was two weeks ago.
Okay. So you might have some comments back before our next meeting. They, they kind of, I think they three weeks is sort of the average. Sometimes they lag. So if, if you guys are interested, I will, we'll do a vote here. But if you guys are interested, you know, reach out to Andrea, as you did before. She chairs the, the full planning group and she can set it up the agenda for that. And I'll forward her the information from tonight's meeting. With that said, do we have a motion? On the floor?
I was motion to recommend approval of this project as, as shown to the planning board. Because my only question is, I know Kevin, we said the president that if we unanimously vote approval at this subcommittee, then it could be placed on the consent agenda for the planning board. So is that, do we want to do that? Or Tom, are you suggesting that there be a discussion about this at the full planning board?
Tom? And so to clarify Chris's question. Any unanimous projects that don't have any, any major changes can go on our consent agenda at the full board. And so those items get voted on sort of administratively right at the beginning of the meeting without any presentation or anything. It's for stuff that's not controversial. So that's a, that's an option. Anyone can certainly pull it off of the consent agenda and make it a full discussion item. And then it usually runs at the end of the meeting. So we do that to kind of allow more time for other more controversial things at the meetings. So Tom or Chris, anyone? Any member of the public that wants to be discussed, can pull it off that consent agenda. It shouldn't impact the vote here tonight.
Yeah, I was just asking for the motion. So again, I'm happy to recommend motion for approval as shown to the full planning board. And I guess if it's good, you know, if we want to just plan to put it on the consent agenda and then in this setting of the meeting, pull it to have a further discussion, which I think was what Tom was proposing, but I don't want to speak for him. That's fine. But my motion is to approve it as shown tonight.
Can you clarify that, Tom?
No. Well, I, I think that we should inform the board and leave it open and leave it open for any, anyone on the board who wants to discuss the lots split to be able to do that. I think that they could. I think we should just say that in the meeting that if I don't know how to do that.
I think it'll show in the title, right? I mean, it'll show in the title of the agenda as agenda item like Kevin had tonight. It will call out that it's a, it's a, it's a lot split. So maybe with that information, that's enough for any board member who wants to pull the item to have a further discussion about that could do so. Right, Kevin? That's how, I mean, it would be titled the same way it is tonight.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, we pulled things off consent agenda to discuss them.
Yeah.
That works for me. So, did we get a second on your, I'll second your motion, Chris?
Sounds good.
And so anybody, anyone opposed to that motion? I think we're all supportive of that, that's three, zero, zero. So there you go. This should be ready for the full board, I, I think in two weeks, if, if you guys are ready to present it in the event that it's pulled off the consent agenda.
Sure.
Do you have any questions?
No, that sounds great.
Okay, thank you guys so much for attending tonight.
Thank you, thank you all.
All right, Judith and I say thank you, and we really appreciate your time and helping us out, we appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. It's just refreshing to see a project that didn't look like that one last week, last month.
Exactly.
That's it for the agenda of officers' reports, I don't got anything to ramble on about. So I'll call this, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, do I have a second for that?
Second.
Anyone opposed? All right. That's it, go enjoy your Wednesday.
Hey Kevin, really quick for the minutes from the last meeting, I guess we rambled on way too much at the last meeting, I just didn't get time to get to them, or when do we see those? Are we going to send that for the next subcommittee or is that going to the full board, what are you thinking?
As soon as I have the draft done, I'm like halfway done with it. Um, yeah, it was a lot of discussion and I don't want to shortchange it. But as soon as the draft's done, I can send that crazy, she can upload those to the website, I mean, I can distribute though. But as far as approving them, yeah, it would be at the next project committee meeting.
Sounds good. Where are you? Where, what hotel are you in, why?
I'm in San Jose for work. Pretty boring. Think I've got some CO poisoning today and mold poisoning looking in these old buildings. So, I will see you guys, if I survive, that's a full board meeting.
That's good.
Good night.
Thanks guys.
All right, signing off.